All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday. Can y'all hear me? Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. The time is now 2:00 PM. This meeting in Commissioners Court is now in session. I declare a quorum. As present, all legal notices have been posted and the court is duly called. Now turn it over to...
On behalf of the City of Tyler, the special call joint meeting between the City of Tyler and Smith County Commissioners Court, Tyler City Council and Smith County Commissioners Court is now come to order, and we do have a quorum.
All right. And this afternoon, Commissioner Carraway will lead us in the invocation and pledges.
Let us pray together. Eternal Father, we are so grateful for your loving kindness and tender mercy that you show our community. But Lord, we want to pause a moment and pray for those in Kerrville and the tragedy that has taken place, Father, that you were splintering all of those individual families that have been affected. We thank you for our first responders that are there to help and to recover and help recuperate. We thank you for them. We thank you for our city and for our county and this privilege you have given us together that we might work together in a cohesive way to bring about a better life for all of the constituents of our city and of our county. We thank you for this privilege that we have to come and serve and to live together with the common goal of making life for everyone better. We thank you for being our Lord and for being our Savior. We thank you for all that you do and all that you provide, and we ask these blessings in Christ Jesus' name. We do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to these actions, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Thank you all for joining us today. We begin every meeting by giving any member of the public three minutes to speak on any listed agenda item. We ask that you fill out a public participation form in the rear of the room or online before the meeting begins. Get that to us, and we'll call you up to speak either now or when the agenda item's called this afternoon. I have received one, and that is Mr. Thomas Fabry. Mr. Fabry?
It'd be really great to see this kind of participation in the budget meetings. Wow. Judge, Commissioners, Mayor, Councilman. The Tyler City Council is asking Smith County Commissioners to participate in a capital improvement plan with a $25.6 million price tag, along with proposed public square lease and user agreements. No drafts or planning documents were posted on the Commissioners Court Agenda Packet to allow the public an opportunity to review and provide public comments. Moreover, the policy governing downtown square usage is a dedicated county responsibility, a responsibility that should not be abdicated nor rushed into without full disclosure to the taxpaying citizens, along with an opportunity for those citizens to provide consent or object. Grassroots America asked District Attorney Putman to draft a public square policy that included language that would prohibit indecent or lewd acts in front of children, which he did almost two years ago. To date, there have been no public discussion on that draft among Smith County Commissioner Court members. Why is there now a discussion with the City of Tyler regarding usage before there has been a single public discussion in the Commissioners Court? Funding sources for the $26, $25.6 million project costs and project details were not revealed in the Agenda Packet. When we met with Judge Franklin on May 9th, just two months ago, to discuss fiscal matters, they not say a word about this investment. Is this project in addition to the current massive taxpayer burden the county taxpayers must are currently undergoing? The courthouse approximately $160 million plus interest, the parking garage bond of approximately $19 million plus interest, the tax increment investment zone dedicating tens of millions of dollars through 2038 and 2047, the unfinished 2017 and 2012 road bond projects with approximately $84.5 million plus interest, and the FY '26 budget process, which is now underway and in stress. Smith County taxpayers need and deserve better notification and transparency. Commissioners Drury and Herrad just took office in January, and there has not been a single appearance of this topic on any agenda item. The city has had months to plan this, and I'm sure the presentation will have a flyover and virtual tour to go along with the very detailed and lengthy legal documents. But why are the Commissioners receiving details and being asked to vote this same day? Why is there no special evening meetings, public meetings, to provide taxpaying citizens the opportunity to see, hear, and ask questions? Taxpayers have every right to know how and where their taxpayers' dollars are being spent and how their county land will be used. At a minimum, the Commissioners Court should in advance fully disclose the content, cost, responsibilities, and contingent liabilities from these agreements, and provide the opportunity for public comments on matters affecting every citizen and whose decisions will have decades of impact. Until these actions are considered by the court, we request that you table this decisions until they have been met.
Thank you, Mr. Fabry. Thank you. All right. Now I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Warren for an opening statement.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's an honor to be here. It's a big day. And I see a room full of people that have been involved with this project, have supported this project, are excited about this project, and to me, it's a day of celebration. It's also a day of celebration for the Commissioners Court to come alongside the City Council. We did this once before in September of 2023, when we started talking about a downtown program, a revitalization program. So I want to just thank you all for participating in this. I'm looking forward to the presentation, and once again, I just want to thank all of you for being here. It is a celebration. So Judge, before I call up our first folks, I'll let you go.
Okay. Thank you all for being here. This past week has really been tough. If anybody's been home and you watch anything on the television, you've seen Kerrville, and you've seen that devastation. You've seen what the first responders have gone through. You've seen what the government's gone through. You've seen what the families, everybody, are dealing with. I actually sent an email to the Kerr County Judge, and I said, "What can I do?" And he said, "Pray." And so when you have a catastrophic event like that, you see collaboration like you've never seen before. Everybody comes together. So what's so exciting to me about this day and about the day that we met back in '23 is this is collaboration without a catastrophe. This is collaboration about making things better and moving forward, and it's really an exciting day for me. So thank y'all for being here to be part of this. I appreciate you.
Now, what I'd like to do, if I may, is introduce Deputy City Manager Stephanie Franklin, who's going to be introducing as a focus from Fitzpatrick as well as from Hafen Associates. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Judge, Commissioners, City Council. Again, I'm Stephanie Franklin, the Deputy City Manager, and I have been privileged to work with this big team for several years. And even as recently as just last week, we've been going over PowerPoints and making sure that we have the story to tell you all today about where we have come from, to just remind us how long we've been at this. So I'm going to start with the timeline, just so, you know, it's kind of clear where we've had public input, when we've had public input. And we started, at least at the City of Tyler, in 2007 with our first Tyler 21 Comprehensive Plan. However, the county started working on their downtown courthouse many years before that. And then looking at Tyler first and adopting a chapter for downtown as well in 2014 and 2019, again, all included extensive public involvement. '22, July 2022, we worked on a downtown traffic study. It was a nine-month plan. There has been a lot of question about what is happening to the streets, again, bringing those back to two-way streets, and then also the roundabouts. We hired Kimberly Horn. Also, the county worked with Kimberly Horn when they were doing the traffic study for the parking garage. So we have tried to keep in step from the very beginning. November 2022 was when the Commissioners Court and the voters approved the bond for the new courthouse. And then in '23, we approved a professional services contract, that being the City of Tyler, with Fitzpatrick and Hafen Associates to prepare a set of construction plans for this project. And then in 2023, August of 2023, we came before the Commissioners Court and also the City Council at a joint meeting where we looked at, you know, how can we all approve this concept design? Pardon me, that was September of '23. And then in August of 2024, most recently, the Hafcent Sales Tax Annual Work Plan included project for all of the fees to move forward. And then '24 and '25, we've done the bid package. So what I want to do now is turn it over to Fitzpatrick Architects. We have Steve and Brandy here, as well as Hafen Associates, to talk about the details of the project. They've been involved with both entities from the very beginning of this. And so, again, to really dive into where we've come from. And then I'll come back at the end and talk about Item 4 just briefly, which is a council-only item to approve the funding for this project.
Good afternoon, Judge, Mayor, City Council, Commissioners. Thank you for the honor to be here and be a part of this monumental day, this celebration. If we'll go to the next slide, Casey? Or I have the clicker. Okay. Here we go. We actually don't have a flyover today, but we wanted to first talk about why are we even here today? Why are we talking about downtown? Why is it important? Just briefly, for those of you who have been along for the journey the last decade and beyond, we've focused on a downtown revitalization plan. We think it's important to the city because of its importance to economic development in the nation. If you look at the nation overall, mid-tier cities are coming back and putting and investing in downtown. It's because it's the heart of the city, and many times it has become less, the strength has fallen from the heart. And we really have strength at the perimeter, but we're coming back and really getting those paddles out and just giving ourselves a jolt of energy when we come back and revitalize our downtowns. This image is, looks simple, but it is sort of the masterpiece of collaboration, like you talked about. To have entities come together and so many stakeholders come together with input, to arrive at a conclusion that we can all work towards to better our community is something we can all be proud of. And we're not alone. Just taking some other case studies and things that we want to look at, we've got three cities, three mid-tier cities in Texas, so that we can compare. Just a few comments of what other cities are doing. And we won't stay on this very long, but Midland, Texas is one of them, about the same size and population, who've recently renovated and added on a convention center. This is all downtown in Midland. They've recently taken down an old courthouse that was in the middle of their square. They've replaced it with a green space downtown. When they did this and when some public improvement started happening, there's the finished project now. A new hotel came along, and this is proposed to be complete in 2026, '27, right off of their square, for $170 million investment. They have a plan to take them to 2050 to infill and have the highest and best use for underutilized properties downtown. And overall, Midland's public investment exceeds $185 million, which encompasses infrastructure, cultural facilities, economic incentives. And they're not alone. Lubbock, Texas, they've just recently, their downtown, you know, was torn down many years ago by a tornado. This is a previous before picture, and this is what stands there now, a new performing arts and sciences project that was a $158 million project for their community, all downtown. This is an empty lot now that is planned, a green space planned downtown for a $12.4 million. They're looking at street improvement projects so that those folks can enjoy downtown in a walkable and safe environment, much like ours. $103 million is going towards their street renovations, starting with their Broadway. They have a Broadway just like us. Overall, almost half a billion dollars of investments are going into Lubbock's downtown currently. One more, Amarillo, Texas. These are all mid-tier cities, obviously, in West Texas. But comparatively, we are here in Tyler with a lot of other assets that these cities do not have. Amarillo is a really interesting, they don't have a college, they're just kind of floating out there. But recently, this lot, right here, that was just an underutilized piece of land, became the Hodge Town Stadium Construction Project. Is it minor league, Steve?
Minor league.
Minor league?
Double A.
Double A, minor league project. They've spent almost $50 million on this catalytic project, which was led into other projects, like the new Embassy Suites Hotel, which is now downtown, just down the street. This is their old civic center. They have a new civic center proposed for $110 million. Overall, they also have about a half a billion dollar investment in their downtown. And the only reason we're going over these and to summarize, we also looked at Waco, Georgetown, San Angelo, other mid-tier cities, much like our own, to see how we're fitting in and to understand why is it important for Tyler to invest in our downtown. We fall right in line, and sometimes we're the more conservative of the investments of these mid-tier cities. And I think what we're trying to say is that it isn't just a nostalgic feeling. It's not just a feel-good feeling to come back and revitalize downtown. It's the heart of communities. It's the space that is open for all. It's viewed as the space open for everyone to be able to have amenities and to come into one area. And it's viewed when businesses are looking at communities as the quality of life. And we're up against other cities who are doing these projects, when businesses are looking at our community to decide where they want to be. This is a measure of growth and future development that we're being measured by when they view other communities. So I think it's very important to understand that this is the heart of Tyler, and we all are a part of the future of what can come and what will be. So Steve's going to take it from here and talk about the last 10 years of planning.
Okay. Well, let's talk about what have we done here in Tyler. Well, as Brandy said, in 2015, we were interested in what can we do to help Tyler get a vision of what could be in the downtown area. And so we decided, we're architects, let's model it, and let's just show people, here's what could happen. So this is a model of Broadway from Front Street to the square in 2015 that we created, and we started showing it to people in about 2016. And we said if the public would do a simple street improvement project, it would look like this, and it would change the dynamics in that two-block area so that all the vacant buildings that weren't even being utilized, there were seven in that two-block area at that time, the private owners would come along and probably look at investing in those properties and making them useful. And we would make it walkable and pedestrian-friendly and easy to cross and have landscaping and amenities. Well, all of y'all have seen this in the past, and we went further and said, "What would happen if we took down some maybe underutilized buildings or buildings that are open spaces adjacent to buildings?" And we put infill projects in there, and we create this dense urban feel along Broadway. Well, if you haven't been by Front Street lately on Broadway, you'll see the EMA has a new building going up in front of their current office. They're expanding. They remodeled that building, and are now expanding it, and it's much like this vision that we showed 10 years ago. We said if the public would do their part, then the private investors would come along and do their part. Well, actually, the private investors jumped the gun, and let's look at some things that happened. The public put the conference center about a mile southwest of downtown, which is really located close enough to downtown to be, and if you haven't been paying attention, it's used almost every other day. It's always booked. Every time I go by, there's somebody using the building at night. The medical school, we were fortunate enough to get that located about a mile southeast of downtown, which is also connected and strengthens the downtown. And that's a once-in-a-lifetime-type project that Tyler was fortunate to get. We had private investors that took the People's Building and renovated that, and it's 100% leased now. The Foundry, that was a place where a building had been vacant for a long time, and it's now utilized every day. The old Bank of America lobby at the Plaza Tower, we put forth a vision of what could happen if we put retail in there. And sure enough, the retail is thriving, and there are people down there every night, every day at those businesses. And the Plaza Tower is now 100% occupied. Finally, the old bombed-out Wilcox Building, we got a developer to look at that and put 31 units in that, opened up this year, and those are for lease, and about half-occupied so far. And then we have some future things that are, that developers from out of town and around the state and around the nation are starting to notice what's going on here. So the old Holly Motor Company Building, Holly Buick Building, we have a developer that is planning an apartment complex that'll wrap around it and keep the old building and use that for retail. And we're working on that project right now, trying to bring that to fruition. And they did this based on the vision they saw for what was going to happen in the downtown. And that's what got them to come look at Tyler in the first place. And then, whoa, I didn't mean to do that. How do I get out of that? Can you fix it, Casey? There we go. We're still working on the Carlton. They have it ready to go. It'll be about 100 units. The interest rates started to go up, and they put the hold on it. We're waiting on them to get funding, and then that will be another 100 units of apartments downtown someday. And the Lindsay Building is going to start... Can you do it again?
I don't know. I've just hit and go.
The Lindsay Building is going to start construction after the first of the year in January, and they're already doing mechanical things to it, but it's going to start construction on apartments and have retail on the first floor, and that'll be another 50 units in that area. Which brings us back to the square. And the reason all those investors and all those people are coming to Tyler and doing these projects in the first place is they've seen the vision for what's going to happen. And when the taxpayers passed the bond for the new courthouse, that was the catalyst that really made everything happen. And this whole idea of a downtown green space and a revised square and a revitalized downtown is what's causing all this economic development.
Like we talked about in '23, we, you know, this was a momentous occasion, and here we are again. Brad, this is a great view of you. Sorry about that. Because, like Steve said, because of the green space downtown, this same hotel developer just finished a hotel in Lubbock, Texas. So one of those case studies we just looked at, the Valencia Group finished the Cotton Court in Lubbock. They have several other hotels in Texas. Well, in case, I didn't even touch it. Okay. I'm just sitting it down. So the hotel is, you know, looking, they've teamed with Marriott, and they're looking at just a... Who would have ever thought we were talking... I've seen the Regions Bank lobby coming down, and who would have thought we would be standing here today talking about a, you know, four-to-five-star hotel downtown that we so desperately need in Tyler. And this is the only place they'll build it, they said, is downtown Tyler. Nowhere else in the community do they want to be. So here we are, you know, with the courthouse. It's every, every three weeks, it almost seems faster, every three weeks we see another floor go up. The progress is just fascinating. Our construction is doing an amazing job. We're all, again, it's just a privilege to work together in a collaborative, positive group, and we're able to get so much accomplished when we do that and trust each other. And so this really, we know this picture is behind. This is several months behind, but we intentionally took a snapshot this day because this is our before picture, and it's the picture we're going to use eventually when we show the after picture and what all has been accomplished. Even now, the Regions Lobby is present in this picture, and it's gone. We're going to start seeing more and more changes and progress happen over time. And we'll be surprised at what this does for the strength of our community and for the economic benefit of our community, and for the citizens to have a place centrally located in the heart of Tyler for everyone to use and to everyone to be proud of. And with that, we're going to pass it to Half. Engineering Bill is going to tell us about the more technical things in the project. So, okay, Bill?
Thanks, Brandy. Steve? Should I keep you up here to run this for me, Steve? All right. Well, I'm Bill Hicks with HAF. We're the engineer on this project, teaming with Fitzpatrick and EMA. And so I'm going to go a little bit over specifics of the project today. I want to thank the city and the county for letting us partner with you in this important endeavor. So when we talk about infrastructure, I want to be clear about what we're talking about. The project that we're talking about today includes streets, sidewalks, drainage, landscaping, water and sewer utilities, traffic signals, and lighting. This site presents a bit of a challenge from a design standpoint. It's very dense, creates design challenges and construction challenges. In addition to that, the age of the infrastructure, some of it being 50 to 100 years old, creates challenges in terms of trying to retrofit or connect to or work with. The last challenge I'll mention is the accessibility challenges across the downtown, which is pretty common for any aging downtown, but it's something that must be addressed as part of the project. The intent of our design was to design the infrastructure to last our community for maybe another 80 or 100 years, the sort of thing that we've been fortunate to have in our lifetimes for our future, for our community. And then also to meet all the design requirements, the current codes and regulatory requirements. So the proposed project will solve those challenges in several ways. First, it's designed in conjunction with the courthouse project, both in the construction phasing of it as well as the design and function and usage. Second, it's going to encourage future development, as Brandy and Steve have mentioned. Third, the project is designed to meet all current and future growth capacity needs for traffic, safety, utilities, and drainage. Particularly the water and sewer utilities are being designed to handle future high-density developments like hotels and apartments and high-volume users like bars and restaurants. The fourth thing, this project will meet all accessibility requirements and greatly enhance pedestrian safety throughout the downtown area for the residents and employees and visitors. And last, it will improve traffic flow through the downtown area. So as they mentioned, we finished the design in the spring. We went to bid in May, and on June 3rd, we opened the bids for the downtown infrastructure project. There were three bidders, with the Fane Group out of Fort Worth being the parent low bidder. And the next four slides will just show you a little bit of a few examples of the Fane Group's work. Similar projects in nature, d- Group's work. Similar projects in nature, dense urban environments, and these were recently completed by them. The first one here is the City of Keller's Street Reconstruction. The next project is the Downtown Weatherford Rehabilitation Project done by the Fane Group. Again, it's a very similar project to what is proposed for you today. Next project is the Highline Connector Trail in Dallas. Again, a dense urban area moving pedestrians around. And the final project I show here is a roadway project for one of the entries to the Dallas Love Field Airport. Their website, Fane Group, includes a number of other additional projects, both civil-type projects and green-space-type projects around North Texas. So after the bid opening, we, as Half, reviewed Fane's submission and found it to meet the requirements outlined in the bid documents. We also reached out to several municipalities who have worked with Fane in the past, and we received positive feedback on their work. Based on this information, we are recommending the city move forward with the award of the construction contract for the downtown infrastructure improvement projects to the Fane Group out of Fort Worth. And that concludes my presentation. I'll turn it back over to Stephanie.
And then finally, just to talk a little bit about funding, you know, the City of Tyler in partnership with the county and what they are investing in the courthouse is looking to move forward with Phase 1, that is Item 4, for the council's consideration today. But to talk about where is the funding coming from, it is City of Tyler. Majority of the funding is half-cent sales taxes. You can see a little bit over $23 million. Then lastly, TWU funding, that's the water and sewer portions that need to go ahead and be fixed while we're tearing all this up now. As Bill said, for any future density, we would need to enhance those lines and make improvements. That's $1,009,000. And then a small amount coming from the City of Tyler's IT fund, just adding infrastructure for possibility of cameras and Wi-Fi and whatever else. So it's really conduit for that. All in all, the total infrastructure improvement cost for Phase 1 are $25,616,000. And then the proposed start date would be August of 2025. And, you know, one more thing, we've kind of been talking amongst ourselves and with each other, I think, quite a bit behind the scenes, but our community really has been talking about downtown revitalization for over 35 years. We started Heart of Tyler. It was the first Main Street city. Heart of Tyler's main focus is revitalization of downtown, and they started in the late '80s. So that was really where the community as a whole started having the conversation. And then as you look at downtown being a legacy discussion, it has been discussed for four mayors, again, probably even before, and five county judges. So today, you know, we are here to answer any questions that you all may have, and also for your consideration on the leases. I know that the attorneys from the City of Tyler in Smith County will make that presentation on Items 2 and 3.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. I would like to say something, too. I'd be remiss if I didn't. You brought up previous courts and those things. We actually have our previous county judge here, and we'll say thank you to Congressman Moran because he led our court at the time in pushing... And pushing forward this progress on this and taking it out to a vote to the public. And they responded, and we're so excited about what this is going to be. But thank you to the previous courts and the previous, even before that, for talking about it, you know, and trying to figure out if they could do it. But I just appreciate your boldness and stepping out with that. So thank you. We wouldn't be here today. All right.
Do we not open up for questions from the...
Yeah, I think so. We can open up for questions right now. I don't know if it'll be... We'll wait till we start Number 2 to address the lease. But if you have any questions just about the downtown plan, right now, anybody or comments?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I was lucky enough, and I think Mr. Bergfeld was also on the early Board of Directors for Heart of Tyler Main Street. Was that late '80s, early '90s? Long time ago. And you're right, there was a lot of talk, and it's finally, finally here. It's an exciting time.
All right. Anyone else? All right, then I guess we'll go to Item Number 2. Request that the Tyler City Council and the Smith County Commissioners' Court each consider possible action and vote to accept the Downtown Tyler Public Square Lease Agreement between the City of Tyler and Smith County. And before we actually get into the questions, I do want to say that we had many, many meetings, and there were times where I was on a different page than the city in those meetings. And I was standing my ground, and we finally, after really working through it, we determined that the best route would be to go to a lease. I think it's best suited for everybody in the community, and I'm excited that we're able to present a lease today, and we can talk through all those details right now. I know there may be some questions.
And we're still friends.
That we are. All right. Any questions? Or do we need to turn it over to Legal? Kind of give us a description of the lease, possibly?
Like Ms. Pollan and myself can provide answers to questions that y'all may have about the lease. I know that the commissioners and the council have seen this lease before. It is a 10-year lease. The funding for the lease will come from a portion of the revenue that is received from the fees for the use of the square. I believe that the city will maintain the programming and the maintenance piece of the square going forward, once everything is completed and constructed. This lease allows us, allows the city, to use this property not just for future development of and programming, but also for an area for lay-down construction, for the current proposed road construction and utility construction that is necessary to revitalize the downtown area. And this lease incorporates both the current square, which is known as TB Butler Square, and what will be the new green space area, which is right now where the current courthouse is sitting. So... And I'll turn it over to Ms. Pollan for any other questions or answers, or she has all the answers, so.
Just to say, we work collaboratively together on the lease, and we're here for answering any questions. But Ms. Wilson has outlined the major terms, and so we give it to you for your consideration today.
You know, I don't have any questions. I would like just to make one comment, that 75% of the revenue that's created from things happening on the square will be paid by the city to the county. So the county will be receiving revenue.
Has it been placed online yet for the public, the lease?
As far as the county goes, it has not been placed online. It's a proposed lease, and it's a draft lease. So we have not finalized all of the terms yet.
Any questions from anybody or statements?
I guess I'll just go ahead and start. I wanted to address... Is my mind going?
Yes.
Okay. Get a little closer. I just wanted to ask, it's been talked about before, the bathroom that's going to be built downtown. Can somebody tell me where that's going to be on this plan?
It's underneath that green square in the top-left corner.
If you see that left right there, yeah, there you go.
Gotcha. It's a hidden bathroom. So I've had concerns about building a bathroom downtown, and I understand that you guys are got a list of things that you're going to maintain on the bathroom. What would you recommend for the citizens to do when they notice that the bathroom needs cleaning?
Well, a couple of things there. First of all, just so you'll be aware, all the stuff on the square will be by... It'll be a separate item that we bring to the city council. This is not part of the... The fourth thing that we're going to be voting on today, the $25 million package. But it's a great question. It's one that we've talked about. And probably the first thing I reflect back to is the day we had the eclipse, and we had hundreds and hundreds of people downtown. And I look back there at Garnet and Andy, and very thankful to them that they had a bathroom in the plaza for the public to use. And there are other facilities in Ricks and Donwans and other places that allow people to go in and use their restrooms. And that's when we really realized that, you know, not only in Tyler, but in other communities where they've done this type of project, they have made bathrooms available for the public. And so we're... This is going to be a great question, and maybe we need to get Brandy or Steve back into this. But the bathrooms are going to be, just like the other bathrooms around the city, there's a code where at the evenings you can lock them electronically, unlock them in the morning electronically. The facilities that will be in there, it's not going to be pretty like in my house, but they're going to be operable and they're going to be strong. And because there are people that are vandals, and that'll be something that we'll have to deal with. Now, one thing that will help with this is we currently have two police officers downtown that are part of our homeless resource coordinator team. They help with the homeless people. But we also have received a grant for two additional police officers, which will be working downtown when this project is completed. And the two policemen that will be working this will also be working the bathroom area and the entire square. And they'll be working from the area from Palace to back on Gentry de France. So it's a big area, but they're going to be present. I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
And I will pull it up, too, that I had concerns about the restroom at first, just for the same reasons you did, Commissioner. But then we reached out, our office reached out to other communities that did build them, and they built restrooms. They redid their square, and they said, we could not do it without the restrooms. And then I went around and asked a lot of the ownership around our square, and they said, oh, please. Because they're coming in here, and they want to either, you know, utilize our restroom. They don't always order food, and we're trying to make that happen and all those kind of things. And it's just really challenging. And then sometimes they're bathing in their restrooms. And so ours, these restrooms, we actually got... Brandy sent us some information and showed us some pictures of possible fixtures and things. It's very similar to the fixtures in the jail, I'll tell y'all. It's stainless steel and very durable, and that's what our plan is for this.
And one other thing, we did go to Sulphur Springs to see what their downtown looked like, and they actually have a bathroom that's mirrored. And so, as the mirrored bathroom, when you're inside using the facilities, you can see the entire exterior and people walking around, but they can't see you inside. So we have... We decided not to go that route. And ours will be a little bit more private.
That's nerve-wracking and very expensive as well, so. So any other comments, concerns? All right. I guess then I will actually... We'll start it with the county. I will call for a motion to accept the Downtown Tyler Public Square Lease Agreement between the City of Tyler and Smith County.
So moved.
That is a motion by Commissioner Moore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Caraway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll turn it over to Mayor.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept the Downtown Tyler Public Square Lease Agreement between the City of Tyler and Smith County. Got a motion by Haney, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Then that takes us to Item Number 3. Request that both the Tyler City Council and the Smith County Commissioners' Court each consider possible action and vote to accept the Downtown Tyler Public Square Use Agreement between the City of Tyler and Smith County. Mr. Wilson, do you want to start the way we did a while ago?
Yeah, I can begin. This is the... This is the public square use agreement. This is incorporated into the lease agreement as Exhibit B, and this spells out the kind of functionality and programming needs of the square moving forward and the future green space moving forward, with the city maintaining the programming. And it spells out the terms for the maintenance as well as potential for fees associated for the rental of this
All right. Mayor, do you have anything you want to add? Does anybody have any questions about that use policy? I know we discussed it thoroughly earlier. Anybody?
I just wanted to ask about the Class 1 through 3 event deposits weren't... The amounts weren't included. Can you give us a little information about that?
I did visit with the city manager about that, and I'm going to let him give us his input.
So as we worked through the agreement, we looked at the city, that was one of the initial things, which means the city and the county. So as we worked through this agreement over the past few months, one of the things that we looked at was, what should the fee amounts be in? The city is very adverse with, as far as fee arrangements based upon the apartments and as far as facility and use. And so we would like to keep that fee separate. The city council will be determining what those fees are at a future date and time, but not at this point in the agreement. Decide to keep that, as far as evergreen, and so keep that part open. And we would determine that at a later time on what the fees would be for the uses and the types of uses on the square itself.
Can you give me an idea of when to expect that?
The city council will probably determine that later on, as this goes on, whether it be a year from now or a couple of years from now. Will be undetermined. Obviously, we'll be evaluating and looking at, based upon probably what are co-fee and other areas that you want to look at for the size and what type of uses. The big part we want to look at is, of course, this is managed with different classifications, is you've got different types of events that will be there. Everything from red dirt type of events, which are going to take up the entire complex versus smaller events that may just take up just a couple hundred people. But we want to make sure that under both four fees, as well as insurance, is another component that we'll have consideration on, to evaluate what is the best way for that to be.
All right, thank you.
So the mayor and council will determine that at a later time.
Okay.
And you said that this is a draft, so where will you convene for the finalization of the...
That will be something that the mayor and the city council ultimately, you will adopt via ordinance at a later time.
Sorry, we were having a sidebar. All right. Yes, so what we just voted on was the lease, and this is the public use, the public square use agreement. Any other comments or questions from anybody? All right. Then I would entertain a motion to accept the Downtown Tyler Public Square Use Agreement between the City of Tyler and Smith County. That's a motion by Commissioner Caraway.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harriet. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. And I will entertain a motion to accept the Downtown Tyler Public Square Use Agreement between the City of Tyler and Smith County.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Haney, second by Nichols. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
I think it was James Wynn.
Second by Wynn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. That takes us to Item Number 4. Request that... Oh, this is actually... I'll turn it over to you. This is city council.
This will just be the city council. And do we need any presentation, or are we going straight to the vote? Does the council have any questions regarding the dollar amount? Okay. I will entertain a motion for the city manager to execute a capital improvements project contract with the Fane Group for the construction of the Downtown Tyler Infrastructure Improvement Project in the amount of $25,616,485,000. Want to give this one... Did you do it, Nichols? Motion by Nichols, second by Haney. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do you have anything else to add, Mayor?
I always have one more thing.
I know.
But once again, I look out here, and I see our community. And Ed and I were visiting a minute ago, and I said, let's talk about the three reasons we're doing this. The commitment to infrastructure, economic...
doing this, the commitment to infrastructure, economic development, and investment in the heartbeat of Tyler." And I think that is what we've just done, and so commissioners, thank you, council, thank you, Judge, thank you. We have been working on this a long time, and all of our conversations have not been totally, they've all been pleasant.[1739.01][1739.01][laughter] But it, but really, it, it really is an honor to work closely with the Commissioners' Court and the judge, and so thank you, Judge.
You're welcome, and I, I, I wanna thank you as well, the city council as well, and I've, I've forgiven the city manager, uh, for anything, for anything he might've said in those meetings. I do wanna, I do wanna say, uh, thank you to everybody for being here, this really does look like our community out here, and it's amazing, I agree with, uh, Mayor Warren, and it's so special, and I know so many of you support this, and we are gonna see something special happen right here in downtown Tyler, the heart of Smith County. All right, thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
So, the time is now, 2:50, and we are adjourned.[1787.21][1787.21][applause]
You did a great job, you did a great job, I'm so proud.
Judge?